Alright, we're going to reopen the council meeting for Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. The meeting has been opened, we've been in the executive session, we are back. We did do the pledge at the um before the executive session, but I will ask if whether the pleas rise and the plegging.
Yeah.
Vice Councilor.
Vice President.
I put the lead vote to the flag for the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask everyone to remain standing through for one moment. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Norma Goldbell. Norma was the executive assistant to the superintendent of Winthrop schools for thirty-five odd years, a position that she cherished. She was married for sixty, sixty-two years, I believe, to her husband Jim. Five incredibly kind children, nine grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. She was a very important member of the PSA community, PSA Hall Down the Point, also a member of the Booster Club. She cherished the Harbors Parade and all that it stood for. She would be deeply missed. She had a brilliant life and died at the age of ninety-five years young. Please a moment of silence for Norma. Thank you. Minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty two meeting, I have circulators, there are motions to approve, motion by Vice President Belcher, seconded by Vice President Munson, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, others in favor say aye, no votes, no, the ayes have it. General information. Tonight, we are going to, I think at the last council meeting, we discussed Chelsea joining the um NREC to become a partner with Winthrop and Revere. I believe both of their city councils, Chelsea and Revere, voted unanimously. We will be voting after this presentation. And I think we have Director Whitney Morgan here, along with Terry, Terry Deliante, to discuss this proposal.
Hi, fellow councilmen.
Hi, how are you doing?
Also joining us is Steve Stappier from the Chelsea Dispatch Center. He's the director over there.
Yep, how are you doing?
So a local resident.
Yes.
It's always nice to have our local residents back here. So thank you for the introduction. My name is Terrence Deliante, many a know me. I am the general counsel for the regional Metro North Regional Emergency Communications Center since July of last year. So I'm helping them with process and bringing on working Chelsea as a third community member. Something that we've been trying to do since about two thousand and fourteen. So I was a member of the board from two thousand and fourteen, all the way up until I retired here in Winthrop. And during that time, we're always, we're trying to bring a third community in to reduce the cost to the other communities. The more communities that join, the more grant money is allocated. So it matters between two hundred significantly, to about the two hundred, about two million dollars year over year, an incentive, plus the savings for them to come in. We'll get, we'll get to all of that. So I want to make sure everyone here knows by joining and bringing Chelsea in, no one gets rid of. All employees get assumed in. Winthrop is already in, in an IMA position with Revere through twenty thirty-nine. So this here will amend that interminable agreement and add Chelsea. So a lot of the language remains the same, Chelsea gets patented, dubbed, tealed in. And that IMA continues the expiration of the original IMA that was voted by council under, I believe, Jim McKenna at the time that brought it before the council. So this here is, you know, I want to make sure everyone understands, is a modification of an existing agreement to add, to try to reduce costs to the other, other member communities. We will have the center in Revere, it's currently in Revere, it's in the Revere Police headquarters. We'll be moving that out of the Revere Police headquarters to the McKinley School. Which McKinley School will be fully renovated. Half the building will be for the emergency communication center and the other half would be Chelsea, City of Chelsea would occupy the other half. So we get the money for that, it'll be through grant money. State nine-one-one already awarded us nine hundred thousand to start that process. We're eligible between thirteen and fifteen million dollars to continue that process and bring all the communications in from Revere and for, and for Winthrop. Right now, we have redundancy that comes in from, from Winthrop, we maintain redundancy. One line goes down, the other line kicks in with five lines. And they'll be meeting next week, as Stan discussed, at once we have the final vote here in Winthrop. So the most important things I want to highlight, that we go through, myself, Whitney, and the Labor Council goes through policy procedures, rules and regulations. It's very important for us to have clear expectations of our staff. Not that we just rewrite them, but we also train on them. The training money does come from the nine-one-one and they have to have sixteen hours of in-service training. We do, we do more than sixteen hours in the Metro North Regional Communication Center. But the standard for the industry is sixteen hours, so by law, every dispatcher has to go through that. So we have dubbed, teled our policy procedures, rules and regulations in with those trainings to make sure they, they get constantly trained on, on them, so they have realistic expectations, they know what we expect. Also, on the training aspect, onboarding training, Director Morgan has, brings the people to the communities in which they dispatch for. They know Lawson Rink, Anglesey Park, Shirley, the landing, the water tower, Fort Amptree Drive. So they get to be familiar with the community and what they started dispatching for the community. And then there's about a four to six week process of field training in the dispatch center alongside somebody. So those trainings have become very important as we onboard people and the rules and regulations. I'll turn it over to Whitney to talk about the operating budget and the potential cost savings to Winthrop by signing on. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me tonight. So quickly, I'll just review our budget currently, just for Revere and Winthrop. So our total budget for FY twenty-five is three million, seven hundred, sixty-three and fifty-two. And the grant money that we have coming in, support incentive grant is about one point six million. Like Terry said, we have the development grant that will be applied to the building, about nine hundred. We have training grants that come in, about a hundred and two, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And EMD, which is twenty-five thousand. So basically, with that grant money, it minuses the total budget and then it is assessed on call volume and population. So how that breaks down currently is about eighty percent Revere and twenty percent Winthrop. With Chelsea coming in, the budget, and first, I just want to speak about how it is an incentive program. And with the program of Chelsea coming in, it brings us to priority one call center. And with that, it gives us better opportunity to fund it. Because now really how state nine-one-one sees it is, a true rec center is three communities. And we have been working on Chelsea for a while and it's coming through. We will be going to McKinley School. And how that works is with the incentive program for Chelsea, one through year is, one through three years is a hundred percent free. Then year four goes down to fifty percent and then twenty-five percent for the fifth year. That, yep.
Chief, I just want to clarify that percentage means that the state picks up a hundred percent
Yes, I'm sorry.
in year one to three.
Hmm.
State will pick up fifty percent in year four and the state will pick up twenty-five percent in year five. Winthrop and Revere do not pick up what Chelsea coming at. We get, they get offset, we get their money through the state nine-one-one program in addition to all these other incentives. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So with that, like I said, we go up to a priority one. So with our projected budget for when Chelsea does come in, and this is FY twenty-six, we got the numbers from state nine-one-one and they based it on nine-one-one calls. And again, our assesses are based on population and call volume. So the projected budget will be about five point five million with the grants coming in. And then just that carryover for the fund balance. Our assessment that would be balanced out between Revere, Chelsea and Winthrop would be about two point six million. So how that is broken down is one point three is Revere, which is about fifty percent. Winthrop goes to three hundred seventy-three thousand, about fourteen percent. And then Chelsea is nine hundred and eighty thousand, about thirty-six percent. So it does bring the assessment down when you're looking at what will the quarters be. So Winthrop, like it's, it will be about three hundred seventy-three thousand. And then what is good about this also is when we do do our budget, we like to, any money left over, that would be the problem.
Yes, the IMA calls for washbacks, reimbursements to the communities at the end of the fiscal year. So Whitney has been very aggressive with grants and getting grants. So we've actually given back to each community year over year. Covid, during Covid, a nine-one-one came up with additional monies to pay dispatchers a little higher rate to keep them. Because everyone was losing them, not just us, across the state. So that, that was one of their plans, we grab more, more money. The town ends up getting a calculation back, it watches back into your free cash at the end of the year. So that's been about ninety thousand dollars. We anticipate in projection on a low conservative end for ninety thousand dollar savings a, a year for Winthrop by bringing Chelsea on. And that's not, that's very conservative, how we want to be conservative, you don't want to set expectations high, but then set low and achieve them, so.
And with that, so I rely heavily on our accounting manager, Jennifer Reeves. She works with our accountant and figures out what we can apply for. Through the grant funding, the support incentive, it does help with costs of our pay rate for our employees. But also, we have been able to benefit. For instance, last year, we got six MDTs for Winthrop police, which had their computers inside their secticas. We had grant money paid for our fire alerting systems, which was almost four hundred thousand dollars. So with the funding available through state nine-one-one, it does help bring down costs. And they've just been very helpful in the fact of, basically we can put it in and what are they going to, the course is going to say is no. You know, that's not going to cover, I'm just, what incentive? So how I look at it, I like to speak with the chiefs of the department and say, what do you guys need? Do we need radios? Do we need this for equipment wise? Because if I can put the grant in and it will come off of the budget of the other departments, it's very helpful. And when we do talk to state nine-one-one, I talked to other regional directors and they have had suggestions as well. Can pay for our CAD system, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it really is limitless. We just have to, you know, put our minds together and figure out how to apply that. What I would also like to talk about is, and I don't feel like I've had a chance to speak about how operations are. So currently, we have staff with five dispatches during the day, five dispatches during the midship, and then four dispatches in the overnight. On each shift, there's always a supervisor. And I like to have that because obviously they're the rank in the room and we hold them, we hold all of our employees to a high standard. But with the supervisors, they are really the responsibility to speak with the departments in the situation, situation of a major event. So with that, my background, I started as a call taker at Revere Fire Department. And then when we regionalized in October of two thousand and sixteen, I was a dispatcher. Then I was promoted to supervisor, admin supervisor, assistant director. And the reason I'm telling you this is because I have been as a call taker all the way to my position now. And I've seen the benefits of how we do things and especially with the training. Terry has come in and done the nine-one-one training for the liability and it's been beneficial because he has a perspective of a, a police chief. But now also as our attorney and knowing what our employees need. One of our big benefits too, like Terry had mentioned, is I do take everybody for a ride along through town, also through Revere. And it's simple things to just drive through and go down shore drive and say, this is Three Bars. You know, this is what somebody may use for this, or Five Sisters, or, you know, Kill Mountain Path. It's all of those spots where the resident may be using a site location or a site name versus the actual address. So we like to take them hands on. And just like the police and the fire chiefs' expectations of their members learning the community that they work for, my expectation is the same. There are going to be those calls where, you know, for instance, say in Revere, the old shaws, well now that's two oh five the parkway. But you may have the, or the community that's going to call in and use that. So say the landings used, we have to be able to know what the street address is. But I also rarely train our employees for failure, because everything is based on technology. Nine-one-one calls in and if you're at your house and you're using your landline, it's zooming right into your house and, you know, the GIS mapping is unbelievable. But if there's failure and mapping is down, like how, I want to say it was May, when did nine-one-one go down, that day? I want to say May of last year. I was at, I was actually out at state nine-one-one and nine-one-one went down. So you don't have the mapping, so now we go back to knowing your sectors, knowing the districts, knowing the streets, asking for cross streets just to make sure where we dispatch properly. So as much as the mapping and the technology is great, I like to train for failure or if we have a shutdown, to make sure that all of the policy and procedures are being followed. So, I'm sorry. But it's really from basic training all the way to following the policy and procedures. I speak with the chiefs often to make sure that we're doing it right. Anytime there is any questions, we go back and pull all the radio transmissions just to make sure that the expectation is always met and we can always do better. And that goes for, if it's a blocked driveway or an active shooter, the call is taken the same way and procedures are followed.
And just as a reminder, obviously everyone here knows the horrific, horrific event that we had in Shirley Street, Revere was the first one in units in.
Yes.
And they were getting there within three, four minutes in from Revere. So having a regional center when you have a major incident is a, is a force multiplier and it automatically just come. So that's, that's a huge benefit to all the communities here. We've sent cruises over there too, shooting from the beach and stuff like that. So it goes both ways. But it's, it's nice to have this relationship already solidified and through the board meetings, you solidify those relationships with the mayor and the managers as well as the police chiefs and the fire chiefs. So we have a seven-member board now, it'll go to nine members. Right now, it works that the town manager, the fire chief, police chief from Winthrop and the mayor, fire police, fire chief and police chief in, in Revere are board members by statute. And then we have an alternating seventh member, which one year's, Revere's pick, second year, that would go away. The alternating member, the three members from Chelsea would make nine, an uneven number, so we wouldn't leave an alternate member. I'm willing to take any questions from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you guys for being here. And also, before I open up to questions on the, on the council, I'm happy to have Chief Goodwin from the Winthrop Police Department and Deputy Chief Glandra from the Winthrop Fire Department. If you guys had any comments at all you'd like to make on this emergency center.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, from an operations point, I mean, it just makes, you know, having the experiences of working in Revere for many years and then working here and actually being part of the team that implemented the rec center originally. The quality of service that you're getting from a more professional, more dedicated, like, police officers don't want to work inside the station, right? So this is a profession now, it's professionalized, the whole industry. I know fire has always been at the forefront of building out dispatch centers and, and, and improving them. And, you know, they deserve a lot of credit for the, for the progress. But this is all about, not just about the money, it's about a better service and better service to the people and to the police officers on the street.
Thank you, Chief.
Deputy Chief.
I don't speak for myself and I can speak for Chief Wiley, we're one hundred percent behind this. If you knew what it was like, this is not new, we've been doing this for ten years almost. It's not new to us, it'll be new for Chelsea if it continues. But before we had this, we used to have a fully trained firefighter, paramedic slash EMT sitting in a room answering a phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That firefighter is now on the street, there are at least two more police officers on the street. So if you go south to Washington DC, the rest of the country is all regionalized. So we're just keeping up.
Thank you. Counselor Swol.
Thank you all so much, this is terrific. Heard about it from Tony last time and I, this is a real step up. Couple of questions. Can you tell me what IMA means?
It's a, it's an interminable agreement between cities and towns. It's a specific chapter and section that mandates the council vote on any IMA.
Okay, I just didn't know that, the acronym. Secondly, you mentioned a hundred percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent. And the current budget for Winthrop is three seventy-three thousand, is that right?
The coming.
Three seventy-three.
Yeah.
The coming is four thirty-four, it was an assessment project, it'll go down in, in future years to about three seventy-nine. I'm pretty proud of the numbers.
What does this mean for us when you say it goes down from a hundred to fifty to twenty-five percent?
So that means nothing for you, it just means Chelsea has to step up in the fifth year to pay, to start to pay their seventy-five percent. Sixth year, Chelsea has to pay their hundred percent of the assessment. The assessments are done on population and call volume. So whether the state's paying, they kind of have a sliding scale, it's sliding back to Chelsea and it becomes Chelsea's obligation.
Right, yeah, that helps.
No, no.
So.
If I could, the state nine-one-one uses as an incentive, sort of to get Chelsea in, they say, we're going to cover your costs for the first three years
So no.
I see.
and then we'll cover fifty percent of your costs in year four and twenty-five percent in year five.
I see, thank you, that's, that's clarified.
And just as a relative thing, as I was building the FY twenty-six budget, you know, before this happened, we were carrying a number of four sixty-three, eight seventy-seven for dispatch. Obviously, that will go down to the three seventy-eight number.
Probably three thousand and seventy.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you for the presentation. It seems like it's all positive. It seems like where quality of service goes up, our savings are increased and I, it, we're going to become priority number one, priority one dispatch. My only question was, how do we get savings if our, is it through the grants that we're getting the savings? Or is it just the, the spreading? If no jobs are being lost, how is there savings?
So the savings comes from more grant money available.
That's what I figured.
So we'll get about two point five million more
Right.
per year than we're currently getting, bringing in Chelsea. So we have savings from grant money, but we also have savings because now the, the whole distribution center is being cut into threes, right? And Winthrop's the smallest one, it's the only time we're going to actually get a benefit being the smallest, right? Is we'll pay the least and the other cities have more call volume, they'll be paying more.
One other question I have for you is, now, does this mean now that Chelsea's on board, we're going to be sending Winthrop police more often to Chelsea?
No, we have a mutually agreements, our employees mutually run calls for Chelsea coming infrequent. Usually it's coming in from Malden, Everett. Those are the mutual aids that potentially gravitate towards Chelsea. If Chelsea did call us, we would send.
I see.
But it would have to be a significant incident.
So just.
Revere would balance all, but we might balance the Revere to help them cover, but.
So the mutual aid agreements are in place, this doesn't change it, it's just being shared dispatch.
That's it.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you, I don't have any questions, that was a really wonderful presentation, but I just wanted to congratulate everybody on getting to this. I know this has been the vision for a long time and this is really great and it's, it's wonderful to hear the operations that you do there. We see our first responders here often and it's a nice reminder that you guys help them do what they do. We're really grateful for your work.
Thank you.
Counselor Ayala.
She took the words out of hand though. Great work for everybody, thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Swol.
Just wanted to say, one more thing, I happen to know Jennifer Reeves personally. She's going to keep good books for you, I can guarantee it.
Oh, yeah, because I chopped up this a little with the money and she, she is great, she does a great job.
Oh, I can't thank you enough. And again, the biggest concern for Winthrop right now is to make sure that we get all the staffing on board protected from Chelsea and make sure they're very familiar with Winthrop, make sure that, you know, the landmarks, it's great to understand the city and the town. Everybody has their little nuances and we feel we have plenty of our own, so thank you for doing that. So I appreciate your time. I would like to ask the council to take out of order the motion. Is there a second? To take an item out of order. I'd like to read a motion to authorize the town manager to execute on behalf of the town of Winthrop the amended agreement by and among the city of Revere, the town of Winthrop and the city of Chelsea for the Metro North Regional Emergency Communications District and Dispatch Center as presented to the town council. The expiration date of the amended agreement shall be June thirtieth, twenty forty, which is the original agreement signed by the city of Revere and the town of Winthrop on January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Summary, this is modifies the agreement that will add the city of Chelsea to the original agreement between the city of Revere and the town of Winthrop. Your motion by Vice President Belcher, seconded by Counselor Swol. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Ayala.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco. Counselor Kostigan. Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Tassanari.
Yes.
Counselor Swol.
Yes.
Counselor Duras. Vice President Belcham.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's nice to see you.
We have no rule of the hearing, we will go to public comment.
Yes, Counselor.
Aye?
Yes.
First off, I would like to thank the committee that I attended at five-thirty for their positive recommendation on the three memorial and one civic memorial items. In addition, the three veteran memorial, the three veteran items are paid for out of my budget, the veterans budget. And the civic item is being paid entirely by the people that proposed this memorial. And I would recommend that, based upon the unanimous consent by my committee, the memorials committee and the unanimous consent by the previous committee that I just attended, that you all vote in the affirmative. I'm going to give you a handout and then I'm going to get out of here. Just to take a quick peek, we're going to.
Phil, you never introduced yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry about that. I'm Phil Ronan, precinct three. I'm the veteran service officer for the town of Winthrop and the boys' varsity soccer coach. So if you could just pass these around, alright? Alright, thank you all. And once again, it would be greatly appreciated if you showed confidence in the memorial committee and voted in the affirmative. Thank you all. And good night.
Night, Phil. Oh, did you get one? I know, I'm just giving this to you. Thank you.
Public comment continues. Is anyone on Zoom?
I have no one on Zoom.
Public comment. Yep.
Should I come up?
No, you don't have to, you can speak from there, just his name and precinct.
Oh, is someone?
Someone doesn't have their handheld.
Hi, sorry, I, I'm from my phone, it's a little bit of an option.
Okay, name and precinct?
Yeah, Kathy Whithouse, precinct six.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to say that the, the vote is coming out on the morning and it would be really great if everyone could, if they can, to just show support for school, the fire station. Um, we really need some budget increased for all our school residents to maintain level of service and all any of the really important programming that they do, AP classes and languages at the high schools. And the fire departments are obviously in really rough shape and we, we need a modern station, so supporting both all three questions on that Saturday election is really, really important. And make sure you're registered to vote if you're not already, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. Ken Woodward, precinct three. I'm a coach in town, I'm a proud father of two. I've also been involved in a lot of efforts in the town since moving here about ten years ago. And I also want to piggyback on what Kathy just said about, you know, getting out there to vote on the election coming out. So a yes vote on question one is not just for the fire department. A yes vote on questions two and three is not just for our schools and our children. Voting yes on questions one, two and three is about moving our whole town forward together. A no vote on question one jeopardizes the health of our firefighters and the safety of our community. A no vote on questions two and three leads to larger class sizes, a staff reduction of at least two teachers per grade, a loss of middle school athletics, a newer increase fees for athletics, after-school programs and clubs. So I hope you guys all will join me here and at home, getting out there to vote. Vote yes on questions one, two and three to protect our firefighters and our community as well as the future education of our students and our town. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I continue the beautiful speech? My name is Avrina Bavarian, I'm from precinct four. And I wanted to add to that, that obviously schools are important for parents and their kids. But it's also very important to maintain the good education level in the town. So the kids of our town are not doing drugs somewhere in the park, rather than that, they're doing mathematics class or physics class, science class. And same with the firefighters, that's not just our protection from fire. That is not, not letting, to push our town into becoming a ghetto. Because if we don't. Because if we do not maintain our uh infrastructure, it is obvious it's gonna fail, it's gonna just dismantle. Do we want a pile of concrete instead of fire station? I don't, and I doubt anyone else wants. So I also uh encourage people to think about the future of our town, the uh price of our property at the end. It's it's important for everyone, not just parents, not just those who have a fire. Everyone, every single person in Winthrop should participate in like making our town safe and beautiful place to to live. Uh yeah, that is probably all, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
All right, Tom DeDarian, precinct three. Uh I wanna say everything is connected to everything. Uh I am on the town's uh climate commission, I am the town manager's representative. I'm also your beloved tree ward. Uh recently, I went to a uh workshop on heat uh for surrounding communities. The the major concern there was that there would be heat emergencies. There would be days of three days in a row over ninety degrees uh and people's health is at peril. Uh in in the presentations, uh they showed heat maps. Winthrop was very hot, I I mean like temperature hot. Uh and also, Winthrop had the least tree cover. So we have medical emergencies and the Winthrop's uh um health department was present at this at this meeting. Uh and they will think about people who are immediate peril from heat. Uh but the long term is that we don't have enough trees, we have not, we're not shading uh all the asphalt. So we have a heat island uh very much like uh cities. Winthrop has the least tree cover of any community uh in or any town in the state. Now, we'll have heat emergencies, we're also uh likely to have droughts. And for that, the tree committee and the tree warden and the DPW needs the help of all people in town. Uh if we have a drought, we might have a drought, we might not have a drought, but if we do, the DPW does not have enough people to go around town and water all the trees. There's still many trees uh and we don't want any of them to die. So we're having a program where we're gonna ask people in the community uh to adopt trees in their neighborhood and see that they get watered adequately during droughts. Uh so we can save them and we can add to our canopy. Uh I mean, everything is connected with everything else. If the pie in Winthrop is big, the slices are bigger. Uh so the override for the schools has something to do with the DPW and trees. Uh three A has something to do with uh state grants. Uh so these things are all connected one to another, uh they're not just isolated. Uh so there is my speech that everything is connected to everything.
Thank you.
Let's take care of the trees and let's also take care of each other.
I have a question to the previous speaker, no?
No. Thank you, uh Mr. Dan.
Escalate.
I want to.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's.
Yeah, precinct one. I didn't even know it was a meeting tonight, I looked for it on website, but I couldn't find it the past week. So I found out about it uh just a couple of hours ago. I don't know what the situation there is and ma- making it well-known that there's gonna be a meeting like this. But I I glanced at the first page and under definitions, bus station means a location serving as a point of embarkment for any bus operated by a transit authority. So I'm wondering uh how far along we are to providing uh bus uh stop shelters. It's been talked about, but no action has been taken uh so far. Maybe it's time uh to not depend on the people that are standing on the uh you know, on the street and sidewalk. Maybe it's time to not depend on anybody else but ourselves, the town of Winthrop, to uh build these uh bus stop uh shelters. Now, I do notice people standing in slush and snow and ice uh with only a two inch by two inch uh uh signpost to protect them from the sh- from the weather. Maybe it's time to get an idea from local contractors about how much it would cost to build different types of bus shelters. Thank you. Thank you. Sue?
Julia Howington, can you unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um I'm Julia Howington, precinct five. My public comment also relates to the April fifth uh special election. I wanna thank the town council for giving us a chance to vote on updated proposals, both for the fire station and school funding. I am a yes for a fire station and both funding options. Um regarding the school funding, I don't think the messaging in November was quite clear enough or stark enough about the fact um that the schools have been operating at a deficit for the past five years. And not because of poor planning on the school's part, but because of over those years, they received less town funding than requested and at the same time had to cover huge cost increases in healthcare utilities and special education. And they've already had to cut one point four million and eliminate two teaching positions. So as a parent, obviously, I'm concerned uh for my kids, but I'm also concerned that fewer of our kids collectively will be able to adequately um will be adequately prepared to succeed and support themselves as adults after leaving the school system. All of us should be worried about that. Um as a homeowner, I'm also worried about declining property values, which as all of us know are closely tied to school funding levels and test scores, um like it or not. Uh likewise, as a resident, I worry that the town will have to reallocate money from other town departments to cover school expenses that are legally mandated in many cases. So you know, we might expect service cuts and increased fees. Um so these are long-term impacts that will impact, long-term costs that will impact all of us, whether or not we have kids in the school system. So I recognize that money is tight for many of us in many households, but thinking about all this realistically voted no probably won't save us money in the long run, we're sort of shooting ourselves in our in the foot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Oh.
Yes.
Just in time. Listen, um so that activity, um thank, yeah, uh precinct four. So I just wanted to make a quick comment about uh the recent vandalism at at Handford Park. Um I I uh you reported it to the police department, this is Sunday morning, so it must have happened Saturday night. Uh Sunday morning, um Steve Callan knows, um the police know. Um and it was a a I sent pictures. So I I thought that maybe um Mr. Murray don't want to.
I guess it's a reflection of Steve's uh responding area.
Yeah, the of the broken of the broken uh railing that someone plowed into. So it and the only comment I have to make is that this is just one more reason after many, many years of 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 requesting a gate open enclosure time. That they, I mean, I don't know how many more times I have to say it, it's probably been twenty-five years of like major um vandalism. So that's my comment and that's, I I appreciate the lighting and the um the cameras. But I really believe that a- at night, there's no reason for anyone to be up there at night unless they want, uh they can walk up there, I guess. But to drive up there and park there and do whatever they do, there's just no reason.
Thank you.
Contented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sue?
Sebastian Lamio, can you unmute, please?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you for allowing me to make a few comments for a few minutes. My name is Sebastian Lamio, I am precinct two. I've been in the town of uh Winthrop for more than twenty years now. I have two kids in the school system in middle school as well as a stepchild who just graduated uh edged out of uh the special ed program at the high school. I know that the uh schools are working hard for our kids, I've seen that every day, I've seen that with my stepchild. So I am commenting today very strongly to advocate for the vote on April fifth and to encourage people to vote yes for all three questions for the firefighters as well as for funding our schools for the education of our kids. And as someone mentioned as well, to uh continue to uh have good value for the properties and towns. Uh and so that our teachers can work in decent conditions and so that our firefighters can also work in decent condition can decent conditions. Um so that's my strong argument for that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Diane Sands, could you unmute?
Hi, this I'm Diane Sands, precinct five. Um I wanna comment about some of the things I've been reading about having a police officer in the room. I certainly don't think that anybody should feel unsafe. Um when I first started watching this evening, I noticed the police officer and I thought they'd gone ahead and hired someone. Couple of questions, I just have a uh a statement to make that um I think it's absurd that we would ha- hire a police officer as an elder who's handicapped. I have absolutely no fear of being in this room. I have never seen anybody as much as make a move forward or uh do anything besides a councilman. So I I don't know what everybody's feeling so fearful about. I have a feeling it has more to do with dislike of a person who may be speaking and looking to silence them. And I have a problem with that. Uh I would like to be able to call them out on it. I don't think we need a police officer because I don't know what he could possibly do uh other than other people in the room, other than shoot someone or arrest them. And I don't think anything qualifies for that kind of activity. Certainly, I think, you know, I have a different background than people. Um I was in a nurse and working in inner-city emergency rooms and drug clinics and jails. So I'm not fearful, but I don't think a police officer is the solution. And I think people have the right to speak and say what they wanna say to the town council. If someone is frightened, they should stay home and go on Zoom, they can participate that way. That's really all I have to say. I hope that we don't consider really doing this action. Another question I have is who would pay for it? Uh I am a taxpayer, I don't want anything to do with paying for this, I pay enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane.
Anne Ferrara, could you unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Anne Ferrara, precinct three, and I am also commenting in support of the new fire station. I'm very excited, the plans look awesome and I really hope that we get that passed. I'm also very much in favor of a school override and stabilization fund. I think this vote on April fifth really will show um our neighbor and communities who Winthrop is. We have not passed an override in over ten years and prices have been increasing, we all know it. Uh and we need to show up for our schools, we need to show up for our firefighters and we need to vote yes all the way down the ballot. Um we have already cut four and a half million dollars over the past five years from the school budget and cutting another three and a half million dollars would re- really be detrimental to um the students in our community and they're gonna grow up and hopefully they stay in Winthrop. So let's fund our schools, let's fund our firefighters and let's vote yes all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
All right, Correspondents, Denise.
I have none, no.
Committee report, rules and ordinance.
Uh.
Mr. President Bell.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance met last night um to begin going over, this was actually to go over the town council rules and procedures. We discussed a little bit about the difference between that process versus the ORC charter review process. It's gonna take a few meetings, um the town council rules and procedures are on the website. I implore everybody to take a look and send in your suggestions as we go through that process.
Appointments, commissions, and committees met earlier this evening and they had, as Phil Ronan had so eloquently stated in the public comment earlier, we had uh four items before us for uh three memorials and one civic memorial. The three memorials were for Sergeant Lynn, PFC Evans, Lieutenant Commander D. Brigorio Senior. And then the civic memorial was um for Coach Robert D. Felice on a um name addition to have Millerfield renamed Millerfield at the Coach Bob D. Felice Stadium. Those came out of the committee with positive recommendation and will be be discussed in old business. Um Firehouse Building Committee has continued to meet. They have two more meetings before the vote. They're leading on March twenty-fourth at five thirty in the Harvey Room. And they have their last meeting uh pre-election, April third at five thirty. Um recently, they've had multiple coffee hours which have been very informative and well-attended. Uh we still, uh the committee is still looking, uh if anybody's interested in hosting a coffee, please reach out. You could go to the Winthrop Fire Station website, which is WinthropFireStation.com. Um you can sign up for a coffee there, you can look at numerous pages of information, including videos of the fire station including uh the most important page maybe to a lot of people is the finance tab, which has the ability to um put in your assessed value of your home, it will tell you the breakdown uh beginning in January first, twenty twenty-eight, when we anticipate the effect of the debt exclusion to um come to full effect. Uh by sliding the tab with your assessed value, if you don't have the assessed value, we have a link that would link you to the uh town's assessors office and you could put in your address and it will provide your assessed value. It will show you payments for yearly payment, it will also break it down quarterly as quarterly is how you get your tax bill. It also further down on the finance page looks at future debt exclusions coming off the tax rolls. For example, Millerfield is paid for in fiscal thirty-one and it will show the net effect of that coming off the tax rolls as well as halfway through the fire station debt exclusion, the high school will be coming off the tax rolls and it shows the effect of that. Uh so it's very interactive website, I encourage you to take a look at it and again, if you wanna host your coffee, feel free to go to the website and uh fill out the form. That is it for the Firehouse Building Committee's School Department Report. Um I'm gonna take the time tonight for the School Department Report to talk about the kids, right? Cause that's what the schools are all about, so. We've had some exciting news in Winthrop over the past uh couple of weeks. Started out with the Winthrop youth hockey, the squirt uh double A team, so these are ten, nine, ten-year-old kids. Uh Winthrop squirt double A team won the state tier four state championship, uh which is an incredible accomplishment. We congratulate the coaches and the players. You know, to win a state championship, they they played five games. In those five games, they they went undefeated, they went five and oh. Um in those five games, they scored twenty-six goals as a team and they gave up four goals as a team. They also scored six power play goals and gave up none. So it just shows the team and the dedication to the sport and the love of the game. Uh so I congratulate the squirt double A team for their state championship. This past, what, two days ago, we had for the first time in forty-nine years, almost to the day, Winthrop High School Boys Hockey Team won the uh Division Four State Championship at the Boston Garden. Was an incredibly exciting game, they won three to nothing. Um talked to people working at the Garden who have worked these events uh for many years and said this is the most highly-attended Division Four State Championship game they've ever seen. Um it was an incredible event. Um you know, the team led by their three captains, right? You had Michael Hogerson, senior captain, scored three goals, got a head, got himself a hat-trick. Uh Captain Philly Boncory just played the way Philly plays, very physical player and incredibly skilled kid and he played fantastic. And then you have Mikey Donahue in the net who just played amazing. Uh stood on his head for a a couple of saves he had to make were just incredible. Um but you you look at that team and you and you look at their coaches, right? You look at uh Coach Dale Dunbar, been there for twenty years. Michael Norris, been there for nineteen years. Michael Naris, been there for nineteen years. Phil Hamilton, I think's been there for seven or eight.
Phil Lundberg.
Phil Lundberg, I'm sorry. Phil Lundberg's been there seven or eight years. Chris Ferrara's been there for a handful of years. Ryan Swatulas, I think, is doing the JV team and and uh Chris Finn been there for a couple of years. And Billy Hayes even graduated last year and was a tremendous help to the coaching staff this year. And uh of course, Mike Rizzioni, right, as a special assistant to this team also for the past twenty odd years. The amazing thing about all those kids, they're all former Winthrop High School hockey players and they're all former Winthrop High School graduates. Uh and I can't think of another public school in the state that can tout that kind of leadership. And um you know, we've been incredibly fortunate to have some great teams over the years, but this team just clicked in a way. Uh they played a very strong Dedham team um who were very skilled. But again, this isn't a team of individuals. It's a team game and the way they were coached, they stuck to a game plan. And the coaches told me today that um as well as they did, they couldn't have done it without the support of the town. Um again, the attendance was incredible. They're so appreciative of the town and how they've came out to support this team. Thanked the police department for the escort and the fire department. Um it's it's amazing to see them come through the streets on their bus. They were as happy as happy can be and they'll remember that. I know co- coach Michael Naris was the last, was a captain of the last Winthrop High School hockey team that played in the Garden. That was, I think, nineteen eighty one. Uh and I think they lost to an acting volleyball team that had future Hall of Famers on it, Tom Barasso, Bob Sweeney. So um it's a very exciting time. And again, this just shows, you know, schools are all about educating. That's the that's the future of our town right there is the kids. But to be able to offer them extra co-curricular activities and and athletic activities and to see what they get out of an experience like that, not only the kids. I'm sure the parents are on cloud nine and probably still, they could probably have flown home from the Garden instead of driven. But uh very exciting. Uh congratulations to the superintendent. Um you know, for providing the leadership that has um has made these young boys just such tremendous kids, uh great athletes, but just tremendous kids. Um so congratulations to them. And I also wanna announce that I'm going to request that we have uh our next scheduled meeting, as they always are, the first and third Wednesday of the month, Tuesday, Tuesday, first and third Tuesday of the month. Um our next regularly scheduled meeting would be April first. Uh I'm going to ask that that meeting be held at the Senior Center. And I'm gonna ask that the meeting start at six as a joint meeting with the Winthrop School Department. And the first part of that meeting will be to celebrate the Boys High School Championship Team um with citations, I'm sure, from the council and recognition and citations from the school committee and I'm sure other recognition. And then we will have our regularly scheduled meeting after that, immediately following the celebration. So again, congratulations to the kids. It's just a, it's it's a great time for the schools and let's continue to support the schools. Thank you for that. Um update on policymaking committees. For the license, Mexico and Tocasa was issued a brown bag license. Winthrop Golf Course has been awarded Keno by the state. The Winthrop Bombs has extended their bar area for patrons. Affordable Housing Committee. The first meeting included discussion on community needs and resources for the uh for their website. Commission on Disabilities, the commission is scheduling events for our community along with the Boston Center for Independent Living. March nineteenth, twenty twenty five is transitioning into adulthood. And April ninth April ninth, twenty twenty five. There will be stay at home or live in the setting of your choice. Board of Appeals' next meeting is March twentieth. Lanning Board next meeting is April seventh.
Technology's not his friend right now.
Very good.
Look at that, you keep going, Dan.
It's muted. I think we're muted as well.
And the town will be providing IT technology services for our board members. Um for updated information on all town projects currently involved within the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, please contact the town clerk. Probably through a phone call, not through email or technology. But um no, please feel free to contact the town clerk's office with addresses that you are interested in obtaining information on. Town Manager Report. Town Manager Report has been circulated. Um asked Town Manager to give a brief update and then some questions on the report.
Sure. Um uh most of the stuff is pretty standard. I will highlight and just sort of, you know, as for people that didn't read it. Um you know, a lot of things are going up in the world, right? Health insurance being the primary for everybody. Um last year, we saw a ten percent increase approximately. This year, you know, we're looking probably closer to fifteen. Um when we got our blended rates, obviously with the GIC, we have multiple policies. Uh those policies went up anywhere from seventeen percent to, you know, maybe seven and a half on some of our retiree plans. But our overall impact, you know, across will be, you know, probably closer to fifteen percent number. We're still running those numbers now to see what that blend looks like. However, you know, there's uh it's difficult to even shop it. I mean, um Maya is another big insurance carrier along with GIC that's out there. I had it in a prior town I was in and those increases were nineteen percent, you know, across the board. So I mean, it's just, we're not, you know, we're doing a little bit better with the GIC, but it's just, it's uh the hospital costs are going up. Obviously, they're seeing the the impacts and that's getting passed down through the insurance rate. So um you know, we'll keep looking at it. We're gonna keep working it. Um but you know, even companies, you know, smaller cities that go out and buy direct from, I say Harvard Pilgrim or Blue Cross, they're seeing similar increases. So you know, you may get out and get a teaser rate for a year or two until they get your claim volume. But then, you know, that ends up going up just as much. So um I'm not sure what the end result's gonna be, but we're gonna keep working it and keep trying to look for alternative options and maybe talk to employees and maybe do do the eighty-five fifteen split, you know, with our employees as, you know, it certainly works. Um but you know, that's that has a, you know, cost as well, right? Um so it's a, you know, maybe do something in the future, talk to the unions. But I'm not sure what the long-term outcome's gonna be, but that's gonna be an impact this year for sure on the schools and the town. Um and 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 our employees. I mean, even at the fifteen percent, that's a a number that goes up by fifteen, you know, percent on their piece of that. So it's a big impact there as well. So um reminder, just I was told to remind everybody hazardous household waste collection day is uh Saturday, three twenty-two, twenty-five from uh nine o'clock to noon. Uh there's a list on the DPW website, everything you can bring and the costs associated with that. And um just people may or may not have seen it, but on April ninth, um Department of Public Utilities is holding a public hearing in this room at seven PM. Um open for comment to the public. Uh they are looking into a pilot program um with a hundred and eighteen residential gas customers in Winthrop and Leamester. They'll also be holding a similar meeting in Leamester. Um but what they're trying to do is taking neighborhoods, they've identified certain neighborhoods with aging gas lines and they're trying to get everybody on those streets to sign up and to electrify their homes and abandon the gas line. Then they would, you know, help with the costs or pay for the electrification of those homes. Um and this is instead of having to replace an aging gas line and then have, you know, more people on gas, they're trying to electrify and, you know, reduce the carbon footprint, obviously. But this is, there'll be time for questions and answers with that, talk about the programs, certainly they've gotta get more people. They've identified a hundred and eighteen residential comforts, customers rather, not just in Winthrop, but also between Winthrop and Leamester. I'm not sure what Winthrop's piece of that is. We can ask them on the ninth. But uh that's gonna happen in this room, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware. Um and they're probably uh seven PM, April ninth, seven PM. And I think that's it, certainly. Open for questions from the council.
And I will say that um you know, as the weather hopefully gets a little warmer and we come out winter, uh what comes along with that is is construction, right? So I know that uh the TIPH project is back underway over there in the street and I'm sure they're gonna be hosting a meeting, I believe, sometime uh for residents and business owners sometime, some Saturday, probably in April. Uh I don't know if there's a specific date as of yet.
Yeah, we proposed it twelve. We're still waiting to get commitment from the state and uh and contract it.
And um you know, you can't help but not notice it that we hope to be in in binder, I believe, by the end of the season. Hopefully, we come back in the spring with a final top coat. But I will ask and and I thank once again the DPW director for being here, if you could just give us a quick update and what people can expect out of that.
Absolutely, yeah. So AR Belly's technically not back yet. Uh what you're seeing there right now has been the uh gas company doing their piece of the uh of the infrastructure uh ahead of AR Belly. I'm told that their their first task, one of their first tasks is going to be to reclaim that roadway and and put it in binder. Um and then they'll start on their curb and sidewalk work. Thinking that they were gonna start as early as April, we reached out to AR Belly to see if they could schedule that reclaim work uh for the s- uh spring vacation, the April vacation, so that the schools wouldn't be impacted. And um it looks now like they're not gonna be uh reclaiming until the school gets out for the season. So it should still have little impact on the schools. Like I said, so the reclaimed binder, curb work, sidewalk work, they have, you know, the signals uh intersection work to do. Uh you'll see all that happening this calendar year. Uh and then the final, final work in in uh next calendar year will be the resurfacing, the installation of the decorative streetlights and uh probably the installation of the final signal equipment for the intersections.
What type of road closures can we expect during the summer, if any?
You'll still have your 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 detours, um different areas on Revers Street. Um it will be um during the paving, it it unfortunately, it's a it's a full lane closure. They'll they'll run a lane uh and then by the time they turn around to come back in the second lane, uh that first lane should be able to be traveled upon. Uh the reclaim, it really doesn't matter that they can reclaim and 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 you can technically drive right on it. It's just gonna be dirt and cobble. It'll be compacted. Uh but they will have grading work to do to reshape the road preparation of the binder. So it will be some some detours and some impacts like you've seen last year. Uh we we are uh nearing the finish line. Thank you.
Uh any other questions for the Town Manager? Counselor's room.
Um I got from um Joanne Hillman, I uh what's went to the tree committee. Thank you so much for your leadership, by the way, on this committee. I'm very excited about your plans for trees. Um Joanne gave this to me. I'm sure she'll be talking to the tree committee about it, but it's called the Cool Corridors Grant Program. I pass it on to you because it's a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's granted to people that wanna do just exactly what we wanna do. And so I know she'll be talking to you. She probably already talked to you about it, but if not, uh we gave it to Tony because he does a lot of the grant writing. And I know his associate doesn't have the exact experience of grant writing, but she can learn it and she and Tony can work with her on it. It's a pretty exciting program and I'm delighted to give Tony some good news rather than yell at him. So I I think that's a that's a full possibility and thank you for your leadership. And it's nice to see the people um there at the Super Town Council.
Vice President Bell.
Thank you. Uh Town Manager Moreno, if we could get some modeling of changing the way we do health insurance. I know there's union considerations, but just to see how the numbers change for the payer and for the town if we look at seventy-five, twenty-five or different percentages, that would be really helpful as we go forward and think about longer term financial solutions. And then for the TIPH project, does that get going then for the season? If we could get those like two week like lookouts to see
Those will resume, yeah.
Yes, that would be great. That's all. Thank you.
Well.
Uh Council Tesla.
Thank you. Uh Council President, Town Manager Moreno, I saw in your report a delay to bid openings for the uh Pauling Street. Yes, it's unfortunate, but um go ahead.
No, uh the bidders had had some follow-up questions that we had to get structural engineer to answer. So we're waiting on those answers and then we'll get that out and then they'll put the bid in, so.
So thinking about that issue that we're having and thinking about the cost of that issue, also thinking about the cost of the firehouse that will be voting on um April fifth. I did some research on the uh eh through the legislation website. The Acts of twenty eighteen, chapter one thirteen, it's a uh it's a bond act. It's an act providing for the capital facility repairs improvements for all of the Commonwealth. Uh there is a, an earmark in there under appropriation eight thousand thirty-five oh two for ten million dollars that shall be expended for the study, design and construction of a fire station in the town of Winthrop. So that is ten million dollars. Should we pass this question that we would be able to go to the state and request be paid out through their capital investment plan? Um I mean, that's a big, that'd be a big win for the town. And in in this sense, it's not a grant. It is an earmark that was from twenty eighteen. It's not been spent out yet. It's not been paid out to the town. You could verify that.
Well, we're aware of it. Uh the chief knew about it. We knew about it when I started here. Obviously, we thank uh former Speaker DeLeo for, you know, getting us back to the day. As you know, you know, like you said, we've gotta get it up into the capital plan and, you know, get the governor's sign off. And we certainly plan on, you know, full steam ahead should the fire station be approved.
But before, yeah, before we can even ask for it, we need to approve that fire station, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
So, thank you. Councilor.
Yes, um first I also want, I wanted to just congratulate the two hockey teams. I think it's a great win for all of Winthrop. It was a pretty surreal moment as they were coming back into town. Um and the cars and the people lined up and the honking and and then just the, the effect it has on all of us. It kinda goes to the April fifth election, in my opinion, you know, and many people have already spoken earlier about the uh it's not just a vote for the stu- schools, but it's a vote for all of us. And uh same with the fire station. It's not just for the people that are being affected that need help, but it's for all of us. And uh and I'll speak more about it uh in a a letter to the editor. But I just wanted to encourage everyone that's listening to um make sure to be there on April fifth and 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 vote uh yes down the board. Uh but I did have a specific question. The one thing that I did have, uh how does someone go about adopting a tree? In the in the form?
Uh we've got a form uh that we're putting out on on the website and it's also my uh Town Manager Report on the weekly. Just fill out the form and we'll get it over there and we'll assign them a tree and
And so what does that entail? So does that basically mean that you basically are now responsible for watering that tree around?
For the, you know, during drought season, obviously, if it's raining, you don't have to. But we, as we plant all the new trees, we're putting watering bags on them. So it'd be a responsibility if somebody takes it on to go over and make sure the watering bags
Oh, so this is still only new trees or is it for old?
For no, just for new trees, cause we, the the first three years are critical. So they, you know, they move all stake and, you know, then they're a little bit uh stronger on their own. But you know, in the first three years, we wanna make sure they stay watered, especially during the drought conditions.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
All right. Old business. Town Council Rules and Procedures. Vice President Bell.
Thank you. Uh as I discussed earlier, that's still being taken up by the committee. Uh we welcome anyone on the council or in the public's suggestions to make the council rules a little tighter. It's basically a self-governing document that takes how we're bound by the charter and dictates how we run our meetings here. So it's a good idea to just review these every once in a while so that everybody is on the same page to make sure we're running things as efficiently and transparently as possible.
Thank you. And that might take two or three of our years.
Yeah.
We'll report back for a full discussion on the council and what changes we would make. Uh Town Council approved Memorial Committee Memorial Street signs. So there's a motion, Town Council votes to approve the Memorialist Committee recommendation for the following. Street sign for Gunnery Sergeant Arthur Lynn. Street sign for PFC Harold Huck Evans. Street sign for Lieutenant Commander Robert De Brigorio Senior. Addition of Coach Robert De Felice to Millerfield. These all came out of the Appointments Committee with positive recommendation. Does not require a second. I will ask the committee um if you'd like to vote on them individually, if you'd like to take them as a group.
As a group.
As a group. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Uh Councilor Ayello.
I think they're all well-founded. They know the background on each and every one of them. Um I think that committees have done a terrific job bringing this stuff forward. Just wonderful. Thank you.
I agree with Councilor Ayello. I think every one of them is well-founded. Um I'm honored to have De Felice's name on the stadium. I think he is a champion of champions and it would be an honor to have that change be made. And uh I think that voting as a group makes sense since it seems like they're all um And uh I think that voting as a group makes sense since it seems like they're all uh no brainers to me.
All right, seeing no other further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the others have, thank you. New business, Town Council review accessory dwelling units, there was a draft sent out. I'm gonna refer that to rules and ordinance, something else we need to do. Town Council approve a new fee cost for our current fee schedule to include public utility uh public hearings. Uh we're going to refer that to a joint committee of rules and ordinance and finance committee. Um Town Council vote to approve Town Manager signing the MN rec uh contract including Chelsea, we did vote tonight for that. And that has already been done. Uh public comment round two. Result, uh superintendent.
Thank you, um I wanna congratulate the uh state championship hockey team. I actually was there, um I was on on duty for a period of time and then at the eight-minute mark, got to go down into the tunnel in anticipation, but. Um with a lot of butterflies in my belly because if I was standing in one spot during that game, I really shouldn't move. Uh although it was three to nothing, um we actually really stick with your course. So was able to watch the kids. I think when you achieve a state championship as a high school athlete, um it is something that you'll never forget. Uh nineteen eighty-four, I remember the trip from Whitensville all the way back to Winthrop with the same display of of support. Uh from our town. And it's something that I have never forgotten. Um so I know that the boys and the coaches uh will never forget the ride into town for the support of the town, the amount of people that were there. From Winthrop just speaks to Winthrop. I think uh you know, if you think about great, the great Kurt Brooks and the nineteen eighty Olympic team. Great moments are born from great opportunity and that's what the boys had that night. He also stated that this is your time. Great moments are made from great opportunity and when I think about the great opportunities that our kids have had to get to where they are, you don't win a state championship because. You just showed up on Sunday to play. You win a championship because you've played together, you've been in school together, you've been in after-school activities together, you've lived together. In a community that has raised you as a family, uh and that's what brought our boys a state championship and brought them home, so. When we think about our schools and what makes a great student and a future great adult, those people that are gonna take care of us. When we get old, like I'm getting, um it's because of the opportunities and experiences that they have had along the way. And the less opportunity you provide, the more difficult it is um to be good and then to be great. And I think what you saw Sunday um really proves that we can be great if we can continue to raise our kids in a community that has. A hel- healthy community with fire department and the police department well-funded, uh with the community supporting the kids. But with the kids be able, being able to have experiences beyond just showing up at the Garden. Because they didn't get there by accident, they got there because they were ready and they were born in the means to be there. Uh through the school department and through the support of our town. So congratulations to my boys, to the coaches and to our community. Um we're all over the news positively, which is something we should really uh celebrate. Sometimes we're not so positive on the news, but this time we were, so um I thank the coaches uh and the support of the community and certainly our boys. So thank you.
Thank you. Good, Mr. Depp.
This public comment?
Yes.
Just woke up. Good news, thank you very much. On the uh Town Manager Report. The bullet points is uh. The Pauline Street Fire Station, floor repair, I've been trying to keep up with this uh. Floor repair for the fire station because it's very much needed. Uh I haven't been in the uh. Firehouse, so I don't know the exact uh ratification, so. If it's gonna fall through or whatever's happening down there, but anyways, uh I did go up to the uh procurement off, no, not the procurement. Your office upstairs in the.
Superintendent's office.
Superintendent's office, thank you. Uh and there was a person named Dylan up there, I guess, and I don't know. Yeah, and uh. I asked him how many bids came in uh for the project and he told me two. So after a week of thinking about it, I said, well, I don't think that's enough to have two bids come in. First of all, because I think, and I'm in the business, that there should be about twenty-two bids that should come in. To get a fair estimate about how much it's gonna cost. So uh thi- this bullet point is vague at its very best about, you know, what is happening there. Says the uh IFB for Pauline Street is out, is is it still out? Are they still accepting bids? I don't know that, it doesn't say it here. I don't think you can get a fair rest of it. With two bids, they could be cousins. Uh I've seen it happen, I've been to many bid openings. And the stuff that happens at these bid openings, uh we're sound you, I've been to at least fifty of these bid openings. And ev- everything happens at a bid open, everything, you name it, it happens. So I'm a little bit skeptical about this whole situation, plus it was only noticed once. Uh that there was gonna be, you know, walkthrough of the and to accept bids, it was only noticed once. And the date of of the notice was it, you know, a day before you're gonna be bidding or something like that, it was very confusing. Like I said, I've been to many bid openings and this was the most confusing uh bid process that I've ever seen. And it says potential bidders have sent us follow-up questions. Where are they? What are the questions? Nobody knows about it, it's top secret. And then it says, and we are waiting for a structural engi- engineer to respond. I thought that was already done. You have to have a struct- you have to have an engineering firm committed to give you an idea of how much it's gonna cost and and what the project entails. So you can bid on it, so this this whole uh bullet point here from the manager is confusing to me. The first confusion is the first word, I think, the uh IFB. You know, just write it out, uh thank you, write it out so everybody can understand it. And fol- possibly follow the process.
Proper notifications have been sent out. That's three minutes. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Zoom.
Caitlin Barrows.
Hi there, Caitlin Barrows, Precinct One, um I just wanna thank everybody for their wonderful public comments tonight. Um I'm so excited to hear the energy about the um April fifth elections, so I'm not going to repeat all the great arguments about why. Um I feel that we should be voting yes um down the ballot in questions one, two and three. I am just going to remind people that uh March twenty-sixth is the last date to request um an absentee ballot for this election. I know Saturdays are hard for a lot of people, you might think that you can make it and your plans change, so if there's any doubt in your mind that you're gonna be able to vote in person on the fifth. Uh please make sure you're getting a absentee ballot, you're requesting it and you're dropping off your ballot or mailing it into town hall. Thanks so much, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Caitlin. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience? All right. Public relation, upcoming events. March nineteenth, Commission on Disability presents transitioning into adulthood at the Shapiro Auditorium, six thirty P M to eight P M. March nineteenth, voter registration at the high school, the high school will be holding a voter registration. Uh encourage the students of age to uh to register. March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, last day to register to vote for the upcoming special election on April fifth. March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, last day to apply for a vote by mail application. April fifth, twenty twenty-five, special town election, that again is Saturday, April fifth. Um seven A M to eight P M. Precincts one, two, three, five, six will vote at the old middle school on Pauline Street, Precinct four will vote at O'Connell Hall at Golden Drive. April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, um will be the second meeting. It'll be the third Tuesday in April and it would be the second meeting of the month for the Town Council and that will also be held as the next meeting will. At the DeLeo Senior Center and that will be the Spring Forum. The charter requires the council to hold two forums, one in the spring, one in the fall. Uh the Spring Forum will commence on April eighteen, uh April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at the Senior Center. Uh I have a motion to adjourn. A motion by Vice President Belgium, second by Council Mutsen, any discussion on the motions, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, you may adjourn, thank you.